Thank you, everyone. I would like to call to order this special meeting of the Chapaka Library Board of Trustees. We've called this meeting to focus on the single issue of the 2023-2024 budget. In preparation for the various deliberables required with this budget. Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. For roll call, we have all, we have four or five trustees present. Pam Moskowitz, due to extraordinary circumstances, is, has joined us by video conference. And our director, Bob Conrad, is present together with our staff assistant, Chantel Pena. And we have our department who have joined us to participate. Thank you very much. Okay. Bob, do you want to present the current state of the budget?
Yeah, if Chantel will pull up a shared screen on working draft B. I want to clarify the purpose of this meeting. I do not need the board to adopt a budget. I just need to, or to approve a budget. I just need the board to adopt a proposed budget. The reason that I need that is because I need to put the proposed budget into the budget mailer, publicize it, and get the tax levy increase onto the, onto the ballot, because we all have print deadlines to meet. So there are actually one, two more board meetings before the budget go, before the tax levy increase goes to a public vote, at which the board could revise their proposed budget. And typically, the budget need not be adopted until the very end of June, or even into early July, before we begin spending money. So again, I think local practices are different from what I've been doing for the last eight years. But that's the clarification. I just need the board today to adopt a proposed budget. All that said, we're looking at a working draft B of the proposed budget. And the finance officer and I have highlighted in yellow points that require a little discussion and resolution today. Beginning with the question of the capital reserve change. Now, at my old library, if the library director were to hire professional services firms, including architects, engineers, or interior designers, to begin the work on a capital project, it wouldn't come out of our capital budget. It would come out of the operating budget. And because of that, if we do the same thing here, we would have a large increase to our professional services B on, which is a different line. So the question that this board needs to come to is, which is better? Balancing both the capital reserve increase and the operating needs, or limiting the capital reserve, or eliminating, eliminating it entirely, or lowering it substantially, Liz?
So can you go through the costs that are driving this? Because it's not a decision we can make with the numbers. We need to know of the costs that are driving this. How much of it is stuff that we increased the cost because we've been heavy spending and creating things for sale? So we expect some incremental cost. But of that, what's locked in that we can't get rid of, and what is still pending, things that we could pull out?
And we pointed that out in the, under the summaries. There's the design consultant, that's fifty-five thousand. That's one time. There is the website development. That is a one time. I think in terms of service contracts, snow removal was a big job. That was about ten thousand. But we were getting our service, and now we're going to be happy. So that's just say five wasn't fun, then we
We, Chantel, if you would move us to the backup calculations. And scroll down to the next time you see the yellow. If you can scroll up a little to include the rest of that section.
There was still removal. We checked it to last year's.
Yeah, it's, it's down further. I remember. Okay.
Okay, well.
But we, you know, but it's appropriate.
Right.
And then we have the addition of one employee with benefits that comes to close to a hundred thousand dollar increase. And that was a decision that was made. We can't change that.
Should, I'm not, should I, I don't, I mean, we're being forced to blow our budget because our director retained an employee who didn't have a spot for and it seems like we're getting a raw end to that deal. No, we had a hundred thousand dollar budget and assistant director line.
We removed that.
We removed that, and we're not
And then we also, we, Bob made some personnel adjustments that reduced the personnel cost. Then, and then if you look at the personal expenses, healthcare is up a ton, the retirement, that is substantially, so those are out of our control, really.
Brian, my apologies. I'm reflecting on the grounds and snow. It's that we had two come in that as the lowest bids that were nearly the same, but you're right. It was ten thousand. My apologies.
Yeah, I wasn't being critical, just
Yeah, right. And it also wasn't the smell removal. That was the issue. It was the landscaping. Just for her, our, right? It was, we weren't happy with our snow removal. That was the issue. It was the overall, it's the same, never, exactly. So I just want to clarify. So we're, because snow removal is a safety issue, and we've always been happy with that side of it.
Unfortunately, we can't see the budget mailer because it's a publisher document. It doesn't come up on our phones. But I don't, they have the little, we've always been able to hold up in the past. Well, I'm just saying whatever's the sound.
Let me answer your question.
Yeah. So just because of how it looks, can somebody just look and tell me if then capital reserve fund of the budget mailer can look like ninety thousand, ninety-five thousand down to fifteen?
There were no notes sent out in the drawing.
Right, that's, that's, that's worth your full attention, which is that the public only votes on the tax levy increase. That raises the, the total amount of our tax levy, but you, the board, before the beginning of the fiscal year, before money is spent, can decide how much we're going to spend, which could even be lower than the overall tax levy. But generally, we balance against our appropriated fund balance, and we generally would budget to take out some of what we have in, in these cash reserves. And then I'm used to a process where we budget conservatively, which means that we have room in the budget for a couple of extra hires, or a couple of extra expenses. For example, if one of our full-time staff marries, or has children, or does both in the same year, that's budgeted for, so that you're not caught mid-year with expenses that you can't cover. It's fairly routine, and that's how you wind up with cash reserves in the first place, through basic attrition. I'm sorry to go over some basics if you're already
No, no, no. And then obviously, the hires are going to start in a jiffy one, right? So we know that.
Right.
I'm just saying because you're asking us about this yellow line and how it looks. We're now going from ninety to ninety-five to ten or fifteen or zero. You know, I think that it's easy to put an asterisk there. Maybe the one-time expenses, which are in fact, like for the sixty-five thousand, if it's the impact, what we want to put on there.
We were in the text section of it.
You know? Yeah, I don't think that that, so
Okay.
I don't have a problem with showing the capital reserve.
Can we return to the professional quickly?
Okay, by having that designer then.
Are you on wages and salaries, or the proposed budget?
So on the yellow line here.
If the public is trying to follow along with our discussion, they do not have the materials because they're not posted at our special meeting. And this is where I was going to pull it up for my own, because that's a little bit far to see. Can we rectify that?
The public, this is being shared currently with the public.
Yeah.
They're looking at, if they're on, they're wanting. So, all right, so I need to go into the meeting as well, but if not.
No, no, I, I would recommend that because then the audio would trip up.
No, I can mute because I have to be able to see that here.
You want to switch spots?
You're seeing exactly what you're saying. I need it on my screen, so
She, she can't see that screen up. She wants to see it on her
But there's no Zoom link posted on this either. So how would the public get to this meeting?
There is a Zoom link.
Not refreshed.
Okay.
It isn't there. This is April eighteenth.
It was also sent to you via email, should be in your calendar if you want to check that.
Yeah, there was an input, right?
Okay, but then we're in full violation because we have not opened it to the public. If we don't have it here, yeah, right, you're, you're, that's your job.
Well, Pam, how'd you get on?
Um, I, Chantel sent a notice, and I clicked on join the webinar.
Maybe go to the calendar on Chapaka.
I don't want to be in a meeting that the public isn't at. So if we can't fix this, we have, we really
If, if you go to the calendar, there, the Zoom link is on there.
Okay.
And we posted the meeting and agenda.
I see a Zoom link. I do not see any meeting agenda or anything else anywhere. Yeah, then you're clear. Thank you. Reporting in progress.
Okay, returning to line one sixty-nine, which you've helpfully highlighted. Thank you. Uh, my understanding is that sixty-five thousand includes, correct me, I actually, I'm asking. I believe it includes KGD at thirty-two thousand.
Or correct.
Um, although a portion of that may be paid prior to June thirtieth, right?
Yes, and that's the case as well.
KGB is for the facade RFP. But that's not what that says it's there for. It is? Okay. So children's room slash theater slash, okay, so sixty-five is not all for the children's design?
No.
That's why I'm trying to
Okay, that's right. The thirty-two is facade. What else?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a breakdown to give you because we never got to the point with interior designers where we, for the children's room, where we have competitive bids to look at. We consulted with one, and the, their recommendations indicate that it would be large enough of a project that it needs to go through the competitive bid. So we're essentially in the same position with the children's room that we are with the video theater, which is the initial consultation that was performed, indicates that it's going to need to be a larger project and come back and go through the competitive process. So this is a large amount intended to be a padded line to allow us to, you know, do the job that's necessary. If we spend substantially less than that, then great.
We, we won't. The, as you all know, the estimate for the, the one estimate that we have, which we're going to check with an RFP for the theater revamp of all the equipment that's not working currently, was eighty-nine thousand.
Yes, but that's not the consultation fees. Okay, so as this note indicates
So that could be capital.
These are just the professional fees.
It could be
Exactly. In fact, that's a, that's a great example, where the quote came back at ninety thousand, but it didn't break out how much of that was consultation versus So when they, they need to be invited into the competitive bid process that they init, that they instigated, right, with their very high quote? And when they come back, it'll, it'll delineate that a little more clearly.
That, that gives me, so with the belief that we are going to pay KGD either fifty percent, forgive me, I'm not I don't have the document with me. I'm not one hundred percent sure on their terms. Either fifty or one hundred percent prior to June thirtieth, then allowing this solely for consultation relative to the theater and the children's area then gives me comfort with that, that number. So
Yeah, that, that is how that
Back any concerns I had.
Even though it was a padded figure, that's how it was arriving at.
Yeah, we should dip, chug our pencils when we have a couple of pins in.
Well, especially if
There will be an R. For both.
But is all of that sponge necessary? Because I think Brian was the one who said if the children's room had two sofas by the glass, he'd be able to sit with Henry. And so I'm wondering, can we delay? Yeah, can we delay the bigger design project? Because we've spent a ton of money and we really don't have it. And, and scale that back to buying appropriate chairs for that space. It's, it's, you know, maybe three pieces of furniture, maybe ten thousand dollars. I'm thinking
Can you speak to some of the goals from this to help? Well, for the children's room, we've discussed their, the, the addition was built, but a furniture wasn't produced, purchased, and a sense of wow and a story of the space wasn't really designed into the process. So we're looking to add that to the space. I have it's the perspective of our children's team, that they don't have interior design expertise, or even strengths. So they're looking to work with a company that can, that can guide them.
Does, that's all they do. They were the architect, and that person, Susan, was the name that went forward. So even as a preliminary discussion, they were willing to do that for free.
And I, I would, even though
Just give us the furniture. So that's fine. It's fine. Let's move on.
But, but so the children's room was part of the same bond that every other space was a part of, and no other space came back and said after that was trimmed out that now they want it. And no library in Westchester is spending, show me one library that spends this kind of money when we're in this kind of budget environment. They don't, and we shouldn't. So that's my concern. That's where I'm going to leave it.
Okay.
Your concern is noted.
I'm new here, but I would, I would say that in the proposed budget, if, if we were back on tab one, which, which we are, but it's not, it's not a gratuitous budget. There's only a three-point-three percent increase to the tax levy. And many of the, the remainder of the overall six-point-eight percent increase is from these one-time expenses. So I don't think it's, it's not like we're living
What's the tax cap number?
It's at three something, three-point-three percent. It's really two-point-nine-five, but, or two-point-nine two, two-point-two-nine-five is what it really is, but that's
So did you just?
I heard it to the New York State Tax Cap website, and it spits out the number that you're allowed to go up to
Right.
without breaking the tax gap. That's the number that I used. I'm always aiming to come in under, and I will say that in, in the past, for seven out of eight years at the Richmond Library, I was able to, to come in under, and two years, we didn't have any increase of the tax levy at all. But this year, I'm new, and because of projects that that I would recommend, and staffing needs that I believe I've demonstrated, we had to hit the tax cap. And we've balanced these one-time expenses against the general funds. So you do see a large, a much larger amount there than you're used to seeing.
But while you're saying we had to hit the tax cap, you're also telling us that we have superfluous spending in this budget. And
I wouldn't characterize it as conservative. If you don't pass a budget that allows the director to spend up to a dollar amount for certain needs, then you really tie their hands and necessitate more specialty
And that's, and that's
When those needs arrive.
Exactly the point is that this board, this board, you're asking for a lot of leeway. And I'm indicating that that's not how we've done things in the past.
Okay.
And I'm concerned that in the current climate, with everything that is happening around us, that it may be not the best year to be, I know you're calling it conservative, but you still haven't answered where we are on capital funds. So I don't know if it's conservative or not in the big scheme of our financials. And I disagree with you that it's conservative.
Okay.
Okay, noted.
I also think one other point I would make is, you know, every, every year we've been putting into this capital surplus funding for it, this is the year we're saying, now we finally have some of the projects to enhance the library. We're spending some of it, not even a whole year. Sixty-five out of ninety-five, sorry.
Agreed. Okay.
And that's exactly, Brian, why I believe we highlighted the, the capital line at the bottom of this. Our overall six-point-eight percent increase in spending would go down a bit if we stopped earmarking to put money into capital reserves when we know darn well that we're going to be spending from it. On the other hand, we're balancing that legitimate interest against the idea of preserving some capital. I'm sorry, it's hard for me to talk without seeing it. If you could scroll down a little bit, without preserving back to proposed budget at the very bottom. Thank you, without preserving some capital reserve expenditures. And that capital, I mean expenditures into the capital reserves.
What is our goal number for the capital reserve? Like, just remember, yeah, no, that was months ago. We asked the question because you said we have so much capital. We've been collecting it for years, which isn't true, but we did collect it consistently for a few of the frequent, the recent past. And we had asked Bob, what is, what is, what should we be doing? Because here we are, like, why are we even collecting fifteen if we're spending, to your point, like, what are we doing? What is the strategy behind these numbers?
Well, let me, let me tell you the answer that I don't have, which is that the New York controller doesn't, they do allow school district-type public libraries to raise an unlimited amount. They don't have a particular suggestion. So we asked our new treasurer, what's a good rule of thumb? And I would say, oh, about one year's operating expenses, which, as you know, we're not at, but we haven't really gotten confirmation from, from the treasurer, and it's really, it's a philosophical difference.
Back. They might have to close.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why you want a capital fund.
That's, that's really not relevant to what we're discussing at this point.
Highly relevant.
This meeting, just to remind everyone, this meeting, we've had previous budget deliberations. This meeting was to approve the budget that had been submitted. Everyone was to raise questions in advance, and then we will tick through those questions quickly and go for it, both.
Okay. Was that process mentioned in our last public meeting, or did I miss that?
I'm, I'm not sure which meeting you're referring to, because
I didn't know. We had agreed on a separate process for the budget, other than having public
The budget has been discussed in every meeting we've had.
Right, and you just outlined a process that I don't believe we've ever followed previously at this table.
Well, today's meeting was just supposed to discuss the budget, so Bob can, those were the requests.
Okay. May I ask, just follow up on a couple prior questions? Um, the theater clerk, would that hire be triggered based on following through on the new equipment, et cetera, to really activate the utilization of the theater, or is that needed when we're having, you know, girl scout troops and fire department presentations with the current?
I would, I would see that as soon as I could get it filled, they would be able to use the current equipment if they come in with the skills needed. If they, if I can't find somebody with the skills needed, then I wouldn't hire someone that, that can't assist with those kinds of things. And instead, I would postpone filling that vacancy until, until we had the new equipment in place.
Okay.
And then we could train them on it.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Um, just minor points, but relative to the custodian hire, did you make any adjustments with respect to ARFO and the hours allocated to the vendor support of the
This latest version of the budget dropped that line by a couple of thousand.
Great. That's what I was looking for.
And that was also the, the proposal of a full-time custodian is a really good example of where I've padded the budget, but hope to come in really no, no higher than this year. So
You shouldn't be padding budget. It's not operates.
I understand your position, but if I can't hire a part-time custodian, then, then we have to make a mid-year adjustment.
It's surprising.
This is all
Yes. So can we just, I mean, if I get one question? I have one more. In terms of the overall salary.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
I just wanted I just wanted to return to the advice that we had on peers from Terry Kirshner and make the point that across, I believe it was twelve libraries for twenty-twenty-three, the budgeted amount did not include a three. The average was two-point-six-two-five, and for the medium libraries, which is how we classified Chapaka, was two-point-two-five. It is a very minor issue within the overall total, but it does create issues for our peer libraries, et cetera. So I just want to put that on the table. I mean, the overall impact between two-point-five and three is ninety.
Yeah, it's not a big number, but I think it also sends a message to the staff
Exactly.
because inflation pressures are high, and over the last two years, you know, they haven't gotten an increase in real terms. So
And Terry did acknowledge our library as being exceptional.
Okay. Can you go to the wage backup, please? Wager
No, sorry, wage and salary, I'm right here.
All right, let's go to the top line, then. So did that change? Okay. So
I guess one question I have on wages is possibly the vacant positions or the ones we're searching. Are you comfortable with the salary, proposed salary ranges, or is there a chance that maybe a secretary comes in and needs more than that?
There's always, there's always that chance, but every line here is part of a larger bucket, and as long as every, as long as the bucket
Those numbers are, I know they might have been sitting from last year's.
There's noting that in a lot of cases, directors get a budget from the town, and there is no recourse. There is no compensation. There is no going back. Whereas here, anything that you might have done to mitigate that scenario, you do not have to do with our budget. What we ask the public for, we expect you to spend.
What does that have to do with, Bob and I were just talking about salaries of prospective hires.
Because if you're worried about a future salary, you don't understand your role. You're still going to be here when that future salary
Laser quote, right, on this budget.
Okay, so we're looking at the backup here, the wage, so let's go down. So what we should be discussing is whether we can support
Please, Liz, please. Please, please, so Please, stop interrupting. It's not polite to your fellow trustees, okay?
Thank you. Follow Robert's rules, then, so that we know who's speaking.
Liz, you're not following Robert's
I am asking you to use them.
I, I am not going to instigate them in the middle of this meeting.
Raise the question of the year check. It's only at seven thousand.
Yeah, it's only five hours.
So that's not really a part-time hire in the sense of a, like, half-time person that's only five hours.
Yeah, it's very few hours, but Bob will speak to that.
That's, that's based on the adult program coordinator's request, and her off-the-cuff comment that I probably couldn't give them nineteen hours. It would be more like five.
We raised the rate also.
We raised the rate substantially.
So I'm sorry. So here's another, like, the same question you kind of raised, Jen, with the ARFO, right? Like, isn't that more like a professional services if you hire somebody for five hours?
Oh, meaning could it be done as a vendor?
Yeah.
But from, so it would affect the line item in the budget, but not the aggregate and likely, in all likelihood. I agree with you.
I just don't know if it appears as, you know, just like you just said, right? If we're moving up
Just like you just said, right? If we're moving up from custodial, which is a staff cost. And it should switch off with Arco, which is a professional fee, right? It's just, to me, it's.
Like Newcastle.
I would, I would have to.
This is, the credit for Bob, but you said you were going to go through civil service, hire this person, so I would need to.
Create a civil service position. What I'd like the board to consider is that prior.
Alright, I mean, that's all.
When, when Carrie Frams was here as a tenant, you could consider her as essentially providing that as a professional service for free. And I was thinking of her as essentially as a, as an unpaid staff person, however you want to think about it. We were getting her for a lot less. She would have cost a lot more than eight thousand, right? If, if her rent was how we were paying her. It would be more like twenty-four thousand.
Right? So we could, we could go back and hire her separately as a, as a fee at this moment. If this position not being built in a civil service way is blocking your ability to run theater programs. That's all I'm saying. It doesn't have to be a position.
Exactly. I think for, for this, we. Could absolutely be open to consideration of a vendor approach, but I don't think it's gonna have a bottom line.
No, this has a bottom line effect, but it just makes your staff, staff line look bigger.
True.
Anything else going down the line then in terms of staff thing? Okay, do you ask about maintenance?
We, we highlighted this in yellow because I think that Liz's point is very legitimate. If this community is not comfortable with this kind of padding, which I would recommend. Because I will really be in a bind if I can't hire a part-time custodian, which I think is what will happen. Um, then you can, we can revert it right now. And that will decrease the overall salary and wage spending. By about. Slightly more than fifty, fifty percent of that.
So, so what you're doing is projecting on the basis of the top end of the range with a full-time hire. And that's based on your expectation that that is the most probable outcome, right?
Yes.
So that's, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else that we wanted to look into the backup or anything else?
Um, I don't think there was, but we could, but we could double check. Yeah, we're just back to that capital reserve line was the only other thing.
Everyone was comfortable with to spend on materials, the department, right?
If you change the percent from three percent raise to two point five, how does that impact our tax? Uh, where are we be and are we able to, does that give us our capital reserve back? Changing that percent change globally against all of our staff is only nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, that's their salaries were.
One point eight.
Nine thousand dollars. I would rather go above three.
Yes, that's, that's a level of conversation.
Okay, do we, relative to the presented budget, do we have any other? Discussion you?
Yeah, I mean, there are other, can you?
You want to run through the building service contracts lines? I mean, everyone wants to check. There.
We can look, but I don't know if I could.
Okay, the energy perspective that largely made sense, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I could recall off the top of my head every calculation. A lot of those came back from Chantel's work. When I handed it to her in the first draft and then they were revised. Over, over time, as I would um. Sign a new contract and then go in and adjust without necessarily making note of the date or time that I adjusted.
So where is our new um strategy, annual fee, is that in here? Alarm, it says. Hey, alarm. And the new website, annual?
I think that's.
That's down in professional services and that was revised to reflect um. Well, that's another one where it was, it was split over two years that was done. So you can't call it a one-time payment, but it'll be one time next year.
Any other discussion? So we should look at the revenue because I just want to make sure those corrections are accurate.
Yeah, Chantel, that'll be on proposed budget at the very top. So are you asking uh? Line your question, yeah.
Well, I mean, I pointed this out and I don't know why it's still showing up, but um. Fines, if you just look at that one line, it's, it's, you're not gonna prove it like this, right? Bob, you're gonna give us a nice number because you're basically proposing that you're gonna collect more fines than you did ever before. But you're showing us that when we turned off, when we turned on auto renewal, we can't get the same fine revenue.
So fines track closely with circulation, which is. Increased a huge amount, so even though we've eliminated. A fraction of fines, uh circulation is high enough that we're generating more fines. Um, this twelve thousand is just based on a prior twelve. The prior six months. Of fine revenues. It also includes lost fees, which don't change based on um. That we, we don't forget our lost fees, but they do increase when circulation increases. So I think that twelve thousand is a good estimate, but if you wanted to lower it. If you wanted to lower it by um.
Well.
Substantially, it would make us marginal.
Even before we turned on auto renewal, but you're saying that you looked at. Once auto renewal was turned on, what we're getting and you, and you think we're gonna blow last year's number out of the water. With a fraction of the fine revenue that we would have seen in prior years.
No, I'm saying that I came up with this number based on the prior six months.
Right.
Well, it's tracking for seventeen.
You raise your concern, he's answered it. Let's move forward next concern.
I don't, I, I'm, I'm just in disbelief because we never collected more, more fine revenue. Than what he's showing.
That's.
And.
The truth.
Our.
In twenty-one, twenty-two.
Two, you were fourteen thousand.
And this year, we're on track to. This is, remember, this is July through December.
That number hasn't moved in months. It's moving very slowly because we turned on the auto renewal. So he's saying that he looked at it and we have a gift here that Cirque is so good. That we're gonna have more of it even with less. Um, with less opportunity to collect it.
Can we move on to your next?
It seems unbelievable, but it's good, I'm glad. Uh, that's a great sign. Um. So that, that was my big one because it just doesn't seem logically possible.
Okay, noted that. Elizabeth Henson is questioning the. Fullness of the twelve thousand dollar amount.
The ability to collect.
Yes.
Okay. On the other hand, you know, he's also increased our investment income, which has increased us. That's a budget at eight. And our library aid. And we're budgeting is what we got.
It's always a, a guesstimate. Um, the numbers that we do control are lines five and six. Lines seven through twelve are educated guesses. If any of them fall substantially short. Then again, the uh general fund reserve line would go up. But if all of them miraculously come in above. And if spending is lower, then the general fund reserves uh amount is lower.
I mean, uh, the revenue number, the one that jumps out most of this is investment income, that it's supposed to go up to one hundred point percent. Well, I imagine that's because we're setting up, we have big plan, set up a fund and.
No, this is, this is entirely based on interest rates.
That's interest rate calculating, well, good for us. Then if we had more in our capital fund, it would grow faster. So. And, and so. Just so I understand, the general.
This is being recorded. We have no plans to do anything with the funds that we have, nothing. In case someone heard that comment.
Well, what's a part of the finance committee's charge to work on possibly setting up a foundation?
Okay, Liz.
We are going so far off track, right? Team two fifty-one. Does that one sixteen, two fifty-one exist in the operating fund? As fund balance or it does?
Yeah.
So you're seeing. That at the end of this fiscal year, we will have that one sixty-one, two fifty-one sitting there to work with. One one six, two five one? One one six, two five one?
Know that, yeah, we, we have many times that amount.
Yes.
In our cash reserves, yes.
But, well, so. We have a capital fund and then we have an operating, so where is the one sixteen, two fifty-one right now?
I think it's called a general.
What the finance officer said.
So it is, so this, okay, I'm just making sure that my interpretation of this is accurate, so thank you. Um, so that is. So, so why are we? So if we have those funds on hand, why are we asking for funding from the capital?
We're not talking about that. Why in the timeline, so we can, as a group, we can decide what to do. Right now, we're penciling fifteen, but we might want to make it zero. Maybe someone has a different opinion.
Alright, can we look at that?
Why are we spending the one sixteen down?
Which we. No, no, I, no, I don't have a problem with the one sixteen. If that's really operating general fund surplus, then that's ours to spend. And it's an appropriate use. What I'm trying to figure out, because I'm hearing different things and I just want to make sure everybody in this room knows. The same information in the same way. You seem to say we have operating surplus that is not counted in our capital fund, right?
No, we're gonna pull some money from the capital fund, that's.
Okay, then this should say capital fund reserves, not general fund reserves.
No.
Yes.
So my understanding is that the general fund reserves includes any set amount. That the board has authorized to be its capital funds. But also the remainder, those two things together are the general fund reserves. Um. Capital investments in a facility would usually be the concrete ones, but capital reserves are also the cash reserves.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, they're all supposed to be separate and they're all tracked separately and we vote every month on them separately.
So we're aware of that. You don't have to teach us how the finances work. We've.
But, but we have something on here that says general fund and we have people telling me that we're funding it from our capital fund and that we're.
Well, the capital portion is the general.
There is? Okay, alright. I'll refresh my, my understanding of our finance policy at some other point. Okay.
So, are we proposing? Before we go to vote, are we proposing any modifications to the budget as?
One more, I would take the fifteen at the bottom. I would be comfortable making zero.
Making it zero, okay. I would too, if you saw my email. The handbook.
Okay.
Suggest that.
I saw that, yeah. And I think when we talk about it in the future, Rocky Smith, they're gonna.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice idea, Ryan, but it's sellable, let us.
Immediately upon getting to the board, spent down capital, which we needed and thank God we had it. Or we would have been in rough shape. So turn around and say, hey, we don't need to collect for the thing that saved us when you got here. It's a little bit of a conflict. Um, I'm not sure how to, how I reconcile that because. That fund is what saves us every time we need to spend for capital.
I think it's a different, separate discussion for another time, but I think the general consensus would be that, yes, it's great and important to have. A rainy day fund that covers some expenses, but the current level is pretty high.
Okay. So why don't we take, if that's the only modification proposed?
Well, the other modification would be to not vote on this in a separate standalone session without the public. To wait for them to show up at our regular meeting and vote on it in our regular meeting. We will have time to do that.
Pam, you're good?
I'm here, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm laughing at the fish.
Okay, then my suggestion.
I guess we should talk, I mean, I know, your numbers are, are often.
Pam, mute yourself.
Estimated.
Okay, then my suggestion would be to present the new budget inclusive of the fifteen thousand and exclusive of the fifteen thousand. And, and vote on that basis.
For the proposed.
That makes sense? Okay, do you want to make a motion, Frank?
Sure, I made the motion to present the budget. As discussed, both the fifteen thousand dollar request for capital reserve. And a zero dollar amount for the capital reserve to show up for those that we can vote on.
Okay.
I'm.
Sorry.
We're voting at the bottom. Where are we showing, yeah?
The twenty-fourth, yes.
Show that?
I think, I think that's.
Yeah, right, okay.
As long as this clarification will give you the ability to move forward. With Lisa Elsner and the official ballot, as well as the preparation.
It's does for the latter, it, it does for the former, for the ballot. Because I believe the only thing she needs on the ballot is the tax levy increase. But I'm afraid that it doesn't. Tell me what to fit into the mailer unless I squeeze, unless you want me to squeeze two uh proposed budgets. Or you're saying.
Last year?
Yeah, let me see the budget mailer. I think you're right. You're right, if it doesn't include that level of detail. Um, does it include, for example. The capital fund reserves, the general fund reserves and its operating.
That's why I'm saying that an hour aside of the session.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think that uh. Postponing. The.
Okay.
Adoption of a proposed budget would allow me to um proceed with the budget newsletter.
Okay. Uh, unless you know that this line. Then first of all, forgive me, I should have seconded before we proceeded with discussion, so I seconded motion. Uh, now we can discuss.
I don't know why we need to have a capital reserve. Because you're responsible to make. Formal action in form of a resolution approved by the board to establish, modify or rescind the fund balance commitment. So it's not as simple as Brian and Bob saying we have money. If the money is in the capital fund, it is not in the fund balance. It is in the capital portion of the fund. So at a minimum, you guys would be wise to change the top to read fund balance. So it is inclusive of everything. It's, it's a little disingenuous to our public. Because you're basically reflecting capital fund balance as fund balance. But that would be an improvement over reflecting it as general fund, which it is not.
Mailer, it comes up as from reserves slash fund balance, so that.
Well, we would need to make a motion in order for that to be accurate. That is a, a misstatement, an inaccurate misstatement on the largest. Financial oversight obligation that we have to our public. This is my concern with brushing this through right now.
No one's rushing.
That we've done in the past. This is three years worth of how it's been presented. So I don't know what that sheet is.
There you go.
This is from twenty twenty-two.
Get to your budget.
So this from reserves, fund balance, zero, because we didn't make any motions. We didn't take any money, we didn't move any money. So that's accurate.
You were disputing the language.
Right, because if you are.
I would also hear you, you did buy. That will be moved from capital into the general because of the situation we, we just discovered during the audit. So there actually will be an extra hundred thousand dollars in the bank. Not the bank in the general fund.
Right, so then if you want, you're not far from a hundred. You could make the number a hundred, knowing that you will, that you do have. You could make the number a hundred, knowing that you will, that you do have, if you actually have it, but I'm not so sure because. You'd have to look at the actuals in the bank, because we've spent money more than we had. And if we didn't move it from capital to the general fund, then we spent what was already in the general fund. So. I'm guessing we don't have the hundred grand you think we have and we would have to move capital, agree to spend down capital. In order for this to happen.
Or what?
I was talking about, it was a separate item. There's a, there was a hundred thousand that was improperly reported as going into the twenty twenty-one, that's going into the. Capital fund that needs to be transferred, transferred from an accounting standpoint back into the uh, general fund.
From October twenty.
From October twenty twenty-one.
Okay. In here, I suggest a question.
Well, I mean, I, I just think it was, um, if, if we don't, what do I, what do I say, asterisk? Why it's about from ninety-five to fifty, I think you just opened yourself up to the question, so if you wanted. Put the explanation of the one-time expenses, that's fine.
Agreed, I think it should be in there.
Or zero, doesn't matter. It's just because it jumped. Yeah.
Say it's a continuation of the work that.
So then we're not moving anything, Liz, we're just showing it's being spent.
Okay. So we'll first take a vote on Brian's um, primary recommendation.
Can I add two things, one is that. Where are we with the audit, because we're about to give the director another year's worth of money without having verified that.
Okay, I'll, I'll address that after we close the budget, which is the purpose of this.
Right, but usually that comes before we give the director another year's worth of money. So I'm just pointing out and asking the question of. And is there any indication of anything in it that it's?
Was delayed because um.
I don't need to.
It's important, under the prior management, the Gatsby actuary wasn't triggered on a timely basis.
Alright, so we're not anticipating anything out of the ordinary coming back from that audit. Great.
The hundred thousand. Yes, which Brian discussed. Okay. Brian, may I trouble you to restate your motion? And we'll start with the um, amount at zero, which would be your primary recommendation, if that fails. We'll, we'll put the fifteen thousand back.
So do one motion. I make a motion to approve the budget. Proposed request um, in, as indicated up here. With the capital reserve request lowered to zero dollars from, I think it was ninety-five last year. Given everything to discuss.
For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year. I second the motion. We've had a discussion, all in favor? I, I. Okay, so we've got approval by four or five, you're abstaining.
Um, usually you say all in favor and then any nays and then abstentions, so when you get to abstentions, you have one.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Only because.
Oh, we can't change the cell, it wasn't changing?
No, sorry.
So the, the number will be more like a hundred thousand. The general fund.
Yeah, eliminating the fifteen below, raise, changes that to uh, one oh one, two five one.
Okay, do you have the clarity you need?
Yes.
Do we have any other urgent matters for this special meeting? Not on the agenda. Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
This is gonna come back to us like this. It's gonna say general fund reserves with that number, I was gonna say now, from reserve slash fund balance.
I'm gonna find out from legal whether to call it general fund, capital fund, or fund balance.
I don't think we should spend money to estimate.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll use, I'll use what last year's language was. Because that's. That's essentially what we're doing, I, I may have called it something different. In field six A, but. What we're doing is no different.
What we're doing is different because there's money involved, so that may change what words there. From what words we've used in the past, because in the past, if there's no money, the word is very.
Go back to a year that we actually took money from there.
The last time when we did our renovation and didn't bond the public.
Yeah.
Also, Joe Gallow may opine on language as well.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn here.
Do I have a second? Meeting has adjourned.